I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Salamaca City Central School District acknowledges the homeland of the Ananda Baca, the people of the great hill. The Seneca people on whose ancestral and modern day land Salamaca School District now stands and whose water we enjoy. We stand with all indigenous peoples and their resolve to remain connected to their land. While we cannot undo what has been done, it is the goal of the Salamaca City Central School District to recognize the history and make improvements that will benefit the next seven generations of indigenous students. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have the agenda in front of us. Mark, are there any, any changes to our agenda?
Uh, yes, there are just a couple. Um, we recently added a request for the Odyssey of the Mind to attend an overnight trip to the state finals, so that's a good thing. And we amended some of the contracts that are attached in seven H. And we modified some of the wording on our resolutions in attachments, um, seven G, H, and I. And that is just some, uh, just very small wording adjustments, not the substance of the, uh, attachments.
And then there's a presentation that's.
Yes, thank you. Uh, we did have a presentation scheduled for today on the tutoring resource called Paper, and we're gonna postpone that due to illness to the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I need a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Motion.
Second. Second, uh, please. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
All opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. Okay, um, we, we do have a, a few board members absent tonight, um. Mrs. Ray, uh, she's doing, doing some overtime work, uh, for the Senate Nation. I guess it's budget time and, you know, she has to get some things in. Uh, Mr. John is, is at a girls' lacrosse game. And, um, Mr. Early, he's, he's, uh, he's, he's on a early vacation. So, uh, they've been, they've been, uh, excuse for today's meeting. Okay, we don't have the paper on presentation. Do we have any uh, thing for the budget presentation?
Yes, we do. So as you, um, are aware, we are well within our budget season. Alright, thank you. And, um, so we have had several meetings. If you want it. Uh, so this is the fourth, uh, uh, presentation that we're going to take a look at tonight. We have already covered our, sort of our first look, which was the cursory, um, view primarily of what the requests were. Then we took a look on the twenty-seventh, their district offices, facilities, and transportation expenditures. Uh, last meeting, we took a look specifically at the instructional expenses, and tonight, uh, we are going to talk about debt service, BOSEs, and benefits. So what you're looking at here is an overview of the BOSEs closer. So BOSEs is our Board of Cooperative Education Services, um, that encompasses uh, most, if not all, of the school districts in Cataragus and Allegheny County, as well as a portion of Erie County, and I believe Wyoming as well. And what you're looking at here is a breakdown of the services that we contract with BOSEs for. And there are a variety of reasons that we contract with them, or essentially purchase services through them. One is it enables school districts to share certain services, uh, and that's what a lot of these are. And once we share a service with another district, that means the district, um, and BOSEs can supply us with aid from the state. So as an incentive essentially to be cooperative with other districts, um, at certain ratios, we can receive aid back on these services. So you look here and what, uh, I know naturally goes to where the differences between the proposed budget and the first column and last year's budget, or what is essentially this year's budget, which is the twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, you'll notice that there are some, um, decreases, but there are also some significant increases. Uh, and that would go with healthcare, um, teaching services, uh, especially, uh, areas such as students with disabilities. That's up three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, our teaching services are up about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So overall, our expenditures with BOSEs have increased. In fact, during the nineteen-twenty school year, we spent five point six million dollars with them. Uh, and this proposed year, we're looking to spend seven point seven. Uh, now that's good for us because that means our increase in aid also goes up. So what we do is we look at the items or purchased services that we need, and we determine, is that something that we can get through BOSEs, in which case we receive aid back on it? Or is it something that we're going to go outside of BOSEs and work directly with a contractor for? Under most circumstances, it's significantly beneficial for us to work with BOSEs. Uh, so let's see, the next one. So this next slide actually shows, um, our expenses compared to the aid that's received. So the blue line, which is the bottom one, um, are the expenses. Actually, I think those are reversed. Um, the bottom line is the aid and the top line are, are expenses. So you'll notice that those have gone up. At the same time, our aid has gone up as well, and that's a good thing. So overall, um, in nineteen and twenty, we received two point nine million dollars back in aid. Uh, we anticipate getting three point nine million dollars back. So while our spending is up thirty-eight percent, the aid that we've received from, from BOSEs or from New York State is up fifty-one percent. So that's really due to good and prudent use of the BOSEs as a resource, um, not only for, uh, instructional, as well as other um, contractual and even environmental and physical plant needs. But, um, when we do that and we maximize the return, it ends up getting us a better service at a lower cost for our taxpayers. Okay, the next, while I say, were there any questions on the BOSEs? Alright. The next is our debt service and transfers. So, uh, this gets a little bit complicated, and because our tax levy across the district is only two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we need to essentially incur debt. So, um, our projected building aid, uh, is one point seven million dollars, and our current debt service is six hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. So because our building aid is higher than what we currently owe, we actually need to incur additional expenses so that that aid can come to us. I sort of, it's sort of like having a coupon, but the coupon isn't actually worth anything unless you spend money. So we can't actually get that aid back unless we have more debt than the aid is worth. So it's not like we can just bank the aid, we have to have debt. So what we're going to do is actually bond in June. So, uh, our thirty-four million dollar project is going out for bond. We are only gonna bond three point three million. The rest of that, we have as far as cash on hand. And then once we bond that, over the next year, we will pay off two point one million dollars of that. And then we can utilize the aid from the state. So, um, while we do have to, you know, go out for a bond, that money is essentially then recouped in state aid. Any questions there?
Questions?
Alright. So the next is employee benefits, and this is for us is a bit of a killer. So health insurance is up for this year twenty-four point two-five percent. And you can see what that translates into for actual dollars. It's a one point eight million dollar increase. Um, you'll see the variance is seventeen point four percent, but it's actually up significantly more than that. One of the reasons that we are also going up a little bit higher is because we're adding seven additional positions, and we have to absorb the cost for, uh, that. And those are some things that, when we add a position, it's very, you know, covering the cost of the salary is one thing, but we have to recognize all of the costs that are behind the scenes in that. And health insurance now is becoming a relatively significant, um, expenditure for us to say the very least. Alright.
Quick question. On the health insurance, did they? I mean, insurance, did they give the, the district or anybody kind of a heads up that there's gonna be such a increase on that?
So, over the past couple of years, there have been very low increases, almost zero, and then a very, very small. So while they didn't really give us a heads up saying it's going up significantly, we sort of anticipated that because everything's going up. And, um, you know, in retrospect, this wasn't a decision that was made by us to keep those rates as a cooperative service. Um, but we had anticipated that it was going to go up. We were shocked, honestly, to see this is going up twenty-four percent because that's a huge number. Um, in addition to that, this year, the district is hit with a six hundred thousand dollar, uh, service fee. So that's another one. So when you see our budget, um, and I anticipate when we present the final budget, the budget's going up, um, and it's not because we're purchasing a whole bunch of extra products or we have great stuff here already, we're gonna continue down that path. But a lot of it is simply due to salary increases, um, positions that we've added, and then the benefits. Okay. Any other questions that I can help with?
Any questions from anybody? Did you go?
Yeah, alright, so excellent. Yeah, you got it.
Okay.
Thanks, Ben. Oh, and then what's up next? Very exciting. And then on the sixteenth, we have the full budget presentation. And that's where you'll see, um, once again, where all of the expenditures are going, where the revenue is coming from, and you'll see the final dollar amount.
What did you say the expenditures were? Instead of order to spend that money, uh, or in order to get the aid, we have to spend money? What was?
Right, so we have to incur the debt. Okay. So it's sort of like the state is going to say to you, you know, we will give you one point seven million dollars in this, for this project, but that has to be paid off debt that we owe the state. So we're going to incur debt so that they can pay it off.
Gotcha. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, Janet, anybody signing to address the board tonight?
Not under public comment, however, Aaron Miller did send an email saying that he was unable, he was unable to make today's meeting, but there is no pressing updates for Title Six. They would like an inclusion of that.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, that brings us to the central office message. Doctor Patel, you have anything else?
Um, just three things. Um, um, continued work with the Native American curriculum team, learning, um, about other nations. We had, um, our Gabrielle Papa and John came to go all the way to the West Coast, and they met with people from the Ford, the Lane, the, the Lane Reservation. And, um, they have, they, I met with them and they talked about how, um, how they shared each other's cultures and what things were the same. And I think in that sharing comes, um, how we can, was to do what we're doing better, right? And, and we helped them as well. Um, they found out some interesting things. Um, we've been using the term traditional food. And we're actually gonna change that to first foods consumed by the nation. So, uh, you know, some of our languages were changed that we're using. And, um, they found out, you know, everything that we know that has happened with, um, the damming of the river, their river was dammed sixteen times. So the sharing of those stories was, um, was good for on both parties. They came back on fire. John is, um, also is, uh, going to be working on, um, not only, um, programming, but it's also been aligned with his work in his, um, fellow, fellow life, his career, his cast. So that's pretty cool. Um, for just the, uh, planning, all our summer programming, including steam camp, athletic camp, pro- athletic programming, trying to do a balanced academic and fun, uh, inquiry based, there's all kinds of fun things going on. We wanna make sure that we do a good practice to, um, revisit and reteach all of our skills and strategies and concepts that kids miss during the school year, and we're working on that, we're actually designing that. Um, and the last thing I'm gonna talk about is how proud I was this, uh, last two weeks to attend on some wonderful events of, in all schools. So Senate of School, so I walked in with my mustache. Um, Senate of School had their math night. I'm sure Nikki's gonna tell you about that, and Aaron. Um, but everyone was walking around with their Super Mario mustaches, playing math games, but it was a real family engagement night. It was wonderful. So everybody in the community, Mountain State. And this week's Senate, um, Prospect, uh, hosted many, um, community, school community members that come and read um, books to our primary children, which was a wonderful experience for us and as well as for them. They had a great time. And our high school's been working diligently so long, not here, but, uh, we have been visiting local school districts like La Seneca, Lake Shore, and, um, Mr. Long, the chief of rush, were talking about how to expand and develop our name. Also, Scott.
Thank you. Mark, anything else for us?
Uh, sure. So, um, just a couple of thank yous. Last Friday was our Native American Retreat. Um, a lot of work went into that to, um, sort of update all that were present from counselors and elders of the Seneca Nation to our own staff and Senate Nation staff, uh, and the different progress that we've made, as well as provide a overview of uh, some of the initiatives that we have here, including, uh, MTSS and the restorative practices. Uh, this past Monday, Tuesday, oh no, I'm sorry, last week, uh, Mondays through Wednesday night, um, our student activist club was in Washington DC lobbying on behalf of the district and all federally impacted schools. So we had fifteen students that were down there, um, and they met with congressmen and senators. And they were exceptionally well received, and the feedback has been very, very positive, both from our representatives and the students, as well as other individuals and stakeholders that were there that happened to come, they interacted with. So, um, we will be working over the next year to, uh, incorporate some other districts, um, working specifically with districts like, uh, Lake Shore and Buanda and Silver Creek to uh, see if they can't contribute and, um, come down with us. And Mr. Hubbard has been doing that for, I think this is his third year, and it has really taken off. Uh, last week, who they, uh, whichever, we had a, um, regional forum for Native American schools, um, at Erie One BOSEs. And we talked about that, and there was an awful lot of buy-in from, uh, the other districts as well. So there's a lot to be proud around, um, all of those pieces. So, uh, that in addition to the groundbreaking ceremony that we just had, um, opening officially Phase Four, uh, we're very excited about that as well, as well as the opportunity, not just for our school, but for the community as well.
Good. Thank you. Let's move on to the board, and that, that's now, uh, looks like Christian's on the, the big table now.
Yeah, that's right. Alright, thank you very much, Dale. Um, I just, uh, Dr. Miller, was that the lobbying of the students that were civic education in DC you were talking about, right? Okay, cool. Yeah, I just wanted to kind of piggyback off that while it's, um, fresh in my mind. I happen to see that, um, social media and some of the students and staff, obviously Mr. Hubbard, and everybody else that's putting in work to get everybody out there. Um, I think that's incredibly important work that all, um, that we're doing, the lobbying and just getting heaven's seats at those tables. So I just wanted to commend each and every one of the students, staff, and everyone that, you know, made that happen. I think that's awesome work, so. Alright, that'll, um, touch that. Um, next that I got on here is to congratulate Mr. Chad Bartosik on his tremendous honor of being inducted into the Cat County Sports Hall of Fame. Um, we all know you're very deserving, so congratulations on that, man. And, uh, yeah, I won't take too many of the other talking points here. I think, uh, the big one that, um, everyone was talking about again was the, the boys' basketball team, but then kind of coinciding that with our, um, twenty-three, twenty-four, um, National Student Section Award. Um, I wanted to commend all the students, staff, faculty, parents, cheerleaders, everybody that, um, put in the tireless effort and worked to, to give us that recognition. And, you know, even just traveling all the way out to the state final four with my family. Thought it was super cool to see, you know, even if we were up or down on what the score was, we were still a lot of steam in the building. I thought that was really cool, and just to see it was, you know, I seen Chad there and some other people there. It's just cool to see everybody, you know, of our locals that are supporting as usual. So I'm just incredibly proud to be a warrior, proud of this community, and yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks. Tracy.
Um, first, congratulations to Chad on, on his donation. Um, today I got to spend, um, a little bit of time at Prospect. I, um, read, I got to read stories. I read a book to the, uh, first grade classroom and also a second grade classroom. It was, um, it was really fun. And, um, in between my storybook reading, I got to be in Mrs. Oakes' office and watch, um, her and Mrs. Roté recorded up announcements with some students and the joke and the thing and stuff. That was really fun. I watched them just, um, we transferred. Thank you for the great experience. Um, yes, and exciting for the groundbreaking of Phase Four Food School, and also the middle school art routine, um, for taking the first place and, uh, on the states. And that's it for me.
Yeah.
Same, uh, congrats, congrats to Chad. Um, that's a pretty cool deal that happened. Um, the other thing is just the same what they said, uh, congratulations basketball team, uh, great run on that aspect. Looking forward to all the spring sports that are coming up. The, um, then, then just seeing the, the progress made down at the, the track in that area. Just kind of need the, uh, a few years ago, I was in high school and everything else, and the track was new at that time. And now to see it be completely changed and turned into something else, it's amazing the progress and what we've built upon back there, um, for that area. And, uh, other than that, the, I just wanted to wish, uh, thanks, have, thanks everybody for coming out. We wish everybody a safe spring break, and, uh, we'll see if the, uh, we'll be able to talk on whether or not it's a cloudy or sunny day for this solar eclipse that comes up. So we'll see how that goes.
Either way, it'll be totally worth it.
It'll still get dark, right?
Yeah.
May not see this. That's right.
I am a sponsor.
Did you? Nice, um, yeah, um, congrats, Chad, again. You know, I, I apologize for missing your function. I, I signed up for it, you know, we just had some family things pop up the last minute, so. Congrats. And, uh, I'd like to congratulate, um, basketball team, holy cow, on final four, you know, uh, our sports are really kiss, kicking in the high noon here in Salamaca, um, you know, in this, that's a testament to everybody's, uh, um, job, work, working with the kids, getting, getting them motivated as we end up performing that show. So thanks a lot. Um, yeah, we, we just did the groundbreaking ceremony down to track. Um, that's gonna be a nice facility as well. Um, I remember when I ran track in high school, we had a cinder track over at Vex Park that was, uh, formed around a baseball field, not around like a soccer field. So that first, that first turn was pretty wicked. It was, it was about, uh, it was about, uh, I don't know, about a thirty-degree turn. I think, well, we played that shit to make. So, and, uh, you know, everybody, whoever ran in that track, you know, from other teams always made, made a comment about that turn. So, um, this is going to be a nice, nice facility, uh, eight lanes. It's going, we'll be able to hold some, some nice sectional meets, you know, things like that, uh, down there as well. So I'm looking forward to it, and, um, that's really all I have to say tonight, too. So thanks.
No more cinders.
No more cinders in the knees. Yeah.
I think I still have one in my palm. I'm a fertile, I didn't quite clear.
Yeah, so you're okay with super plentiful?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect, we're good. Okay, um, next on our agenda is our consent agenda. Uh, we have the, uh, approved Board of Education minutes from last meeting, uh, train, train, track, with a travel conference and, and overnight trips, CPSC recommendations. Um, so I need a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Motion.
The motion by Christian. Second, second, second by Ted. Uh, on favor?
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Any discussion? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, under old business, we have policy. Um, and it is policy on absentee ballot voting. Um, I, I will need a motion to accept that policy.
Motion.
Motion by Ted. Second, second, second by Tracy. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. Okay, moving down the agenda here. I let you guys off the hook, um, tonight, by the way, just because a Christian, Christian needs to make, make it over the lacrosse game. So, so we're trying to speed this up as fast as we can. Right, Mark?
That's right. You got it.
You guys do a great job anyway.
Yes, everybody was a wonderful guy. And we are. Okay, under new business, uh, we have a CSU, uh, memorandum of agreement, Mark. You wanna give us some background on that?
Certainly. So, uh, at our last board meeting, we, uh, modified a position. Uh, we essentially created a new position, uh, in the district. And once a new position is created in a district in a new title, uh, then one of the units, so that would be the civil service unit, our SSSO, STA, or SASSA typically picked that up. Um, the position that was tri- changed was a CSU position, and this is the memorandum that, uh, the district and the civil service union acknowledged that this position is now a civil service unit position.
Okay. So I need a motion for the new position?
Motion.
Second. First by Tracy, second by Christian. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Okay, our next on our new business agenda is a standard workday and recording resolution. Mark, wanna give us a little back on that?
Sure, anytime we add a new position, um, to the district, what we need to do is identify particularly for retirement purposes, uh, the number of days worked and the hours for that particular position. So you'll see this, you've seen this come up in the past, and we probably do this maybe five to seven times per year.
Okay. Okay, so I need a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Ted. Second by Tracy. Uh, any discussions? Uh, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. Thank you. Next on our agenda is a list of surplus items, and there's a pretty, pretty lengthy list here. Um, looks like mostly, uh, shop, shop items. Um, compressors, mixers, throw presses, sanders, things like that. Uh, so we got a motion to declare those items surplus.
Motion.
Motion by Christian.
Second.
Second of the Ted. Any discussion? Uh, on favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
Gee, I am those pizza ovens.
I am, I.
There are some wrestling games.
Forty-two by forty-two is out.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Um, next, next on the agenda is to create a custodian position. Uh, so I need a motion to create that position?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Second, Tracy. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. Okay, next on our agenda is the school calendar for the twenty-two-four, twenty-five school year. Um, any big changes on that, Mark?
Um, not really. Things are a little bit different with regard to, uh, Christmas and how that, it almost turns into a full two weeks off, um, in order for us to have snow days built in appropriately. Because traditionally, we have two to four snow days. Um, we do have some snow days built in. Um, one thing that's nice this year. Um, one thing that's nice this year is that we will, we do anticipate having the Friday before Memorial Day off next year uh for a nice four day weekend, so. Other than that, um, it's sort of a standard uh calendar.
Okay. Okay, so I need a motion to accept the uh school calendar for next year.
Motion.
Motion by Christian. Second.
Second.
I have a tab, any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries, thank you much. Okay, the next on the agenda is we have a donation from the Seneca Nation Private Counsel. Uh, I think that was twenty five hundred, correct, Mark? Uh, let's see. So we will need a motion to accept the the donation.
Motion.
Second by Tracy, second by Christian, any discussion?
I just want to come uh commend the Seneca Nation Council on their donation and supporting the students.
Thank you. Uh, on favor? Opposed, abstained, motion carry, let's make sure we send them, send out the level of appreciation.
You got it.
Okay, next on the agenda is a resolution. Um, I'm not going to read this whole resolution, you guys can read it yourself if you want, but Mark, you want to give us a rundown?
Certainly, so anytime the district is looking to acquire properties or um make modifications to existing property that we have. We have to send out a request to the State Education Quality Review or State Environmental Quality Review uh Commission. What we do is we outline our intentions and then they took a look at it not only for environmental factors, but also um a little bit of a larger picture. And then they will make a determination if in fact um we receive what's called a negative declaration and that's actually what we're looking for. We want it to be negative, meaning it will not have a significant impact on the environment, and we did receive that.
Okay, I I will need a motion uh to them, uh item, item G.
Motion.
Motion by Tracy.
Second.
Second by Ted. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Right.
Opposed, abstained, motion carry. Okay, item H is another resolution. Uh, Mark, want to give us a rundown on that one?
Sure, so now that we have accepted the negative declaration, um we're looking for approval to make a formal resolution that will be voted on by the voters of the district. Um, to purchase several pieces of property, um including seven thirty four Broad Street. Um, two parcels on East State Street and one on Sullivan Street. Um, the parcels on East State and Sullivan are adjacent to the Prospect School District or School. Sometimes I think that they're on district, um in Prospect School and uh that will allow us to make some significant improvements to the campus there and and. Including not only traffic flow improvements and parking, but also some anticipated structures in the future.
Okay, perfect. I need a motion to accept uh item H.
Motion.
Motion by Christian.
Second.
Second by Ted, any discussion? Uh, on favor?
Hi.
Opposed, abstained, motion carry. Hey, the last one. Here is on the new business is the item I, which is another resolution. Uh, Mark, could you give us a little rundown on that?
Sure, this is a resolution to approve the budget um on May twenty first, as well as hold elections for trustee seats that are uh coming up.
I need a motion to accept the.
I didn't, I didn't get everything in.
It's it's um also approving the three legal ads that have to be approved by.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for the clarification.
Sorry, I don't.
Um, I I need motion to accept item I.
Motion.
Motion by Tracy.
Second.
Second by Ted, any, any discussions? Okay. I'm sorry.
No, I said not the.
Okay, yep. All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, abstained, motion carry, thank you much. Okay, moving on to the personnel consent agenda, um we do have some items for personnel action tonight. Um, we have um several resignations and retirements, um we also have some. Uh unpaid leaves listed, uh we also have some, some appointments. So we will need to accept the personal agenda as presented by the mo- the motion.
Motion.
Motion by Ted. Second by Christian. Any discussion? Uh, on favor?
Right.
Opposed, abstained, motion carry. Do we have any introductions that we have to make?
I don't believe we do, um, we do have a couple of individuals who are, uh, well, one, Jay Keely, who has been with us for a while. He is uh separated for the purpose of retirement, so we'll acknowledge him at an upcoming meeting.
Okay.
And then we do have a couple of folks who have received permanent appointments, um specifically Courtney Ronan as a family support worker and Aaron Miller. Um, unfortunately, neither of them could be here, but we will congratulate them when we see them.
Great, thank you very much. Congratulations to everybody. Um, our next section is board information and reports. And we have a transportation report, IC meeting minutes, uh second meeting of the absentee ballots, which we keep doing with today. Um, we also have a notice of the votes, the budget vote and the election of board members. And we have a list of upcoming events. Uh, we have spring break coming up, I'm sure all the staff and students are looking forward to to a week off, a weekend a day, right?
Week in one day.
Week in one day, uh.
Totality worth it.
Yep. So it's what?
Nowhere day.
Yes, no other day, yeah. Um, also, uh, April eighth is is the snow day, so 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 there's no school. But uh please don't look at the sun without any protection on your eyes or if 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 you've been active, make sure, sure you have a proper filters for though. Uh, we also have a IC meeting coming up, uh on the tenth. Uh, and a couple of board meetings listed for for April the sixteenth to twenty third, uh the sixteenth is for the code. We both, but both.
Correct.
Um, okay, I think that takes care of our agenda for tonight. I will need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion.
Motion by Ted.
Second.
Second by Tracy, uh all in favor?
Right.
Hi.
Opposed, abstained, motion carry, thank you everybody for coming out tonight.